Good afternoon. We'll start tonight off with prayer and pledge. We will, I will lead prayer and pledge. For those who would like to participate, please bow your head. Most gracious heavenly Father, we come to you once again asking you to help us to deliberate and to make the decisions that we need to make for the city. We ask that you cover the city of Saginaw with your blood. Then you watch over our workers, our city manager, and all that, all that live within the city limits and outside of the city limits. These things we ask in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Let's lead to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thousand pieces of paper. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Sylvia.
Present.
Councilmember Williams.
Present.
Councilmember Balls.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tembench.
Present.
Councilmember Ostaas.
Present.
Councilmember Garcia.
Present.
Councilmember Flores.
Present.
And don't see Councilmember Coaklin yet. Mayor Moore?
Present.
You have eight members present and one absent.
Okay, do we have any announcements?
We have a couple. Today is the deadline to sign up to volunteer for the Fall Team Up to Clean Up, which is happening this Saturday. The event will be held from 9:00 a.m. to noon, beginning and ending at the Public Works Building. Those interested in helping may visit www.saginaw-mi.com/cleanuptosignup. Also, this Saturday, the city's convenience station will be open from 8:00 a.m. to noon, where city residents may utilize the station to drop off bulky items or other miscellaneous items that need to be disposed of. That takes us to public input.
Okay. Let me do some housekeeping. Councilpersonists, please put your phone on vibrate or silence, as well as your computers. I ask that anyone that is seeking, I ask for the audience not to be rude, obnoxious, or any obnoxious behavior, to clap and all of that. No, we are in a meeting. Okay? So, you said public input, go right into order. The speakers will be called to the podium by a clerk. You will be timed three minutes. I ask that you wrap your statements up within that three minutes. Please make your point within those three minutes. Madam Clerk.
Our first speaker is Jimmy Carter.
Honorable Mayor, City Manager, and Councilmembers, I'm here tonight to speak to you about Saginaw. And as I am a Saginian, and a woman got me here. She, I married her only 48 years ago. She was a Saginian. And I would like to say how much I love the community, the architecture, the history. I mean, from a logging town to a coal mining town to an auto parts town. I mean, this community has done amazing things with the architecture and the growth of the area. I have been talking to the Visitors Bureau about setting up a convention center, and they like Bay City and maybe Frankenmuth, but woe is me. We need it here on the river in Saginaw. And we can fill that up, or I could say I can fill it up myself, 12 months a year, and add $400 million to the retail food sales of the area. We could cohabitate with any of the major hotels, and we can add that next to the center. I've talked to the Shaheen Development Center. They can aptly take care of our brown ecological issues. They've done it many times before. They're a champion of that in the state of Michigan, and we can count on them to do us right. So, I'd like to have you set up some sort of meeting between me and the city manager, and I can go through the details at that time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Cornetia Harvey. On to Donovan Monte Gomez.
Sorry, I got my chair in section. Matthew Carpus, Saginaw Police Command Association. A week ago was Labor Day. The city of Saginaw recognized this holiday with a Facebook post. Quote, "Happy Labor Day. Labor today for a brighter tomorrow." To me, these are just words, and actions speak louder than words. Truthfully, this city doesn't appreciate or respect its own unions or workers. How else could you explain what happened to me and my coworkers? One day, I have an important benefit, and this benefit was in the contract. During contract negotiations, this city sent us their proposed changes for the next contract, which the union voted on and ratified. The city later changed the language in the contract, which was not included in the offer they sent. These deviations included drastic changes to a few members' benefits. I guess maybe we were too trusting. No one noticed the changes right away. By the time we did notice, we were told, too late. But if we had noticed the changes when they were first made, they would have been corrected. It's like telling someone it's okay to steal as long as you're not caught right away. It's frustrating when you don't ask to be treated well, you only ask to be treated fair, and that doesn't even happen. In the 2000s, as recessions were hitting and affecting everyone, our police unions were fair with the city. We recognized the city, like others, was struggling financially. We bargained away benefits and took almost nothing in raises over many years. We knowingly lost benefits in fair negotiations to help the city during tough times. Fast forward to now, to having benefits deceitfully taken away. It's frustrating to say the least. While this deceit only affects a few officers, it goes noticed by everyone else. Even those not directly affected see their employer, this city cannot be trusted. That's sad. And it contributes to a deteriorating morale situation at our department. As bad as the situation is, there's a light at the end of the tunnel. While our current contract doesn't expire for two more years, we continuously create letters of understanding with the city on contractual issues. This could be done now and fixed once and for all. You all have the power to direct this to happen, to right this wrong. I hear about all the good things happening in Saginaw, all the promise in the future, but as I tell people on the street who sometimes make mistakes, you're taking two steps forward, one step back. Until this city can be fair in dealings with its own employees, any steps forward are not without steps back. Being elected by my peers as president of the command union, I'm proud of the work my members and I do, especially considering the challenging environment we work in. Please help me to again be proud of the city I work for. Let's all step forward. Fifteen seconds left. Go Lions.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Rob Brown.
Good evening, everyone. Manager, Mayor Moore, and Councilwoman. Councilwomen. So, I'm Rob Brown. I'm with First Ward Community Center. I'm proud to be the CEO of First Ward, a 94-year-old organization in the city of Saginaw. There's few organizations that can say that, and so we're very proud. Our mission is to make a positive difference in people's lives. We're here to talk about a proposal that we put in about two months ago, and we're hoping that we're able to get funded on this proposal. You know, you fund First Ward, you fund Saginaw. And so, we want to talk about our building and the help that we need in our building, right? We have a 34-square-foot building. The building is structurally sound, has really good bones, our boiler, our heating and air conditioning is well, our roof is well. There's a lot of things that's well, but the one thing that's not so well is the appearance of our building. With the history that we have at First Ward, coming into this position, I hear a lot of stories. But the one thing that's also I hear is that the building looks the same, right? The building was built in 1979, so you can imagine some of the issues that we may have as far as the appearance on the inside. What we want to do, and we want to present our best foot forward with the way we look, the way we operate, and so we're asking for your help in that manner. We use an acronym, ICE. We want to inform, collaborate, and empower. We inform. You will see a newsletter that First Ward is going to have coming out here shortly, and it'll be distributed throughout the city of Saginaw. We want to collaborate. We want to work with all the entities to make Saginaw much stronger. We want to make Saginaw a city where we attract young folks, and I think First Ward could be a part of that. And lastly, the E for ICE is empower. We want to empower our community, the residents, through our programming. Currently, we really working on beautifying the city of Saginaw. We're focusing on the northeast side in particular, and so we, once again, we still need that help with that appearance when people come into our building. Lastly, I want to leave you with this. We have some young folks that's going to come up here and talk to you guys and let you know the impact that First Ward has had on them. So, once again, I'm Rob Brown, CEO of First Ward Community Center. We want to make a positive difference in the city of Saginaw.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jamar Griffin.
Hello, you guys. Mayor, City Council.
Pull the mic down.
I wanted to speak about my experience at First Ward. My experiences at First Ward taught me a lot because I was a little troubled back then, and I used to get in a little trouble and stuff like that. But one thing was I went there in 2016. It taught me responsibility, control, and my little anger that I had, you know? So, I always made better decisions and stuff like that, so, you know, they always accepted me back. They always was home, you know? I've been there since 2016, so on and off. It was real good to be at First Ward. I loved the energy. I loved the vibes there. Lot of kids came in and out, lot of kids I do see still, lot of people I don't, you know? But one thing I can say for sure, Mr. Brown, he trying to keep it up. He trying to keep it growing, so, because we need it. These teenagers do the community center, or they just going to keep crashing and crashing and crashing. That's one thing I can say, because I was 15 years old, had faced an attempted murder before, you know, and dropped it to great bodily harm, but I changed, you know, changed a lot, you know? So, I can say that it's there for a greater good. It's not there for no reason. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Griffin, you talking louder than that in hallway. I can hardly hear you.
Our next speaker is Wendy Trailer.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Wendy Trailer, and I am here to speak to the great impact First Ward Community Center has had on my life. I moved to Saginaw with my daughter, who was three at the time, in May of 2016 after dealing with some devastating family matters. By June of 2016, I was able to secure a job at a call center here. Unfortunately, that job ended in January of 2017, so at that point, I had to go and apply for food stamps and Medicaid and cash assistance through the MDHHS. In order to receive that cash benefit, I had to either be working, going to school, or doing some type of community service. Thankfully, I was blessed with the opportunity to do my community service hours at First Ward by February of 2017. I did custodial work such as cleaning restrooms, mopping, and taking out trash. I also helped prepare for the annual Taste of Soul event. About three to four months into my placement there, I was given the opportunity to work with the Summer Youth Employment Program as an administrative assistant for the summer. After the summer program ended, Ms. McGregor, who was the former director of First Ward at that time, invited me to be a part of the prevention team, and I was essentially given the opportunity to work with older adults, with the older adult population. From there, I was the older adult prevention coordinator from about 2018 to 2022. In 2023, I was offered another opportunity to become the workforce development coordinator. In this role, I engaged with youth, youth 16 to 24, and worked with them in our higher and summer youth employment programs that teach job readiness skills and provide employment opportunities to our youth during the summer. Being a part of the First Ward family has afforded me numerous opportunities to take training classes. I've traveled and been places I've never been before. I met countless people, even some of you. I was introduced to you through First Ward. And it helped me become self-sufficient to where I no longer need food stamps or cash assistance, thank God. First Ward has also provided a safe space for my child, who is now 11, and she now is considered to be a First Ward kid. I'm so grateful to First Ward and the help they have given me to date. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Brianna Green.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Brianna Green, and I'm excited to share my journey and the impact that First Ward has had on my life. I just recently graduated from the University of Alabama in December, so I'm taking a gap year, and of course, I need somewhere to work.
Roll tide.
Roll tide, yes. So, since April, I've had the privilege of working with this incredible organization, and it has been nothing short of transformative. When I first joined First Ward, I knew very little about the work they do or the communities they serve. However, I quickly discovered that this organization is a place of positive change. Being a part of First Ward has placed me in environments and situations that have pushed me way beyond my comfort zone, like this one. But nonetheless, these are opportunities I never would have encountered on my own. Whether it was engaging with diverse groups of people or working in high-impact areas, First Ward has consistently empowered me to grow both personally and professionally. One of the most significant ways First Ward has impacted me is through their support of my career aspirations. I don't know if they are aware, but they have been incredibly encouraging of my goal to work with urban communities as a future doctor. Seeing their commitment to the community has been nurturing to my ambitions and has solidified my dedication to serving urban areas. What truly sets First Ward apart to me is their unwavering commitment to their mission. They don't just talk about making a difference, they actively live it every day. Every meeting, event, and all the work that is done behind the scenes is a testament to the power of the dedication and compassion in creating real, positive change in people's lives. I'm honored to be a part of an organization that aligns so closely with my own values and aspirations. First Ward has not only shaped my professional path, but has also inspired me with their genuine efforts to improve the lives of those they serve. I look forward to continuing this journey and contributing to the work they do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our final speaker is Rodney Mitchell.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Rodney Mitchell, and I am a current medical student at the University of Michigan. I am here to share how First Ward Community Center has profoundly impacted my life and contributed to my growth as a young man. Growing up, I found myself at a crossroads, uncertain and at risk. And like many of my peers, the streets seem to be, seem to offer an easy escape. But I was fortunate enough to find a guiding light in the First Ward Community Center. This place became more than just a location. It became a sanctuary where my life began to change for the better. The center provided me with essential support that extended beyond traditional education. Throughout their programs, I learned invaluable soft skills, communication, teamwork, problem-solving, and most importantly, how to manage my time. These skills are not just theoretical. They have practical applications in every aspect of my life, from my academic journey to my personal relationships. What truly set First Ward Community Center apart was its dedication to actively engaging my mind and interest. The mentors and staff there didn't just offer a place to go. They provided me with activities and programs that kept me focused and motivated. By offering a range of engaging and constructive activities, they kept me off the streets and away from trouble. Their commitment went beyond mere supervision. They invested in me and believed in my potential, while also providing me with opportunities to explore my interests and talents. This support not only kept me on the right path, but also ignited a sense of purpose and direction in me. The positive impact of the First Ward Community Center on my life is immeasurable. It has equipped me with the tools and confidence to build a more competent and strong future that I am proud of, and for that, I am deeply grateful. In closing, I urge everyone to recognize the support and support the invaluable work being done at the First Ward Community Center. It is through such dedicated efforts that at-risk youth like myself are given a chance to rise above their circumstances and achieve their fullest potential. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, that takes us to remarks of council.
Remarks of councils. Councilmember, you have three minutes. Please watch the clock. We'll start tonight with Councilman Balls.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I'd like to thank everybody for coming and speaking today. I guess I will say this, I'm a First Ward Community Center kid, too. I hate to tell you guys how old I am when I started off as a kid there, but I'm 67 years old, so you figure that out. I've been going to First Ward Community Center, I think, since I was seven years old. And I know it's always an inspirational place for me to go. I learned how to do a lot of things at First Ward Community Center, playing baseball. We was almost state city championships, and some of our teammates went to the state championship, and we won that with Hardman Drugs. So, I have a lot of history at First Ward Community Center. The whole time I worked in my whole career at the Saginaw Staringear, I always gave all of my United Way giveaways to the First Ward Community Center, so I know what you do, and I know how valuable it is to our city for you guys to continue the programming that you do. So, I'd like to thank you all for coming to speak and hearing about the great stories that continue to go on at the First Ward Community Center. You know, I don't have a lot to share this evening, but the same thing, keep going on. I hope that, and wish that, some of the kids or young adults that's getting into trouble today with the violence that we have in the city of Saginaw could attend a place like First Ward Community Center. Unfortunately, First Ward Community Center, Neighborhood House, and other community centers was closed for a while because of plants closing, people didn't have money to give, and we just didn't have money to keep our community centers open. But thank God, with the ARPA money that came here, we was able to get the First Ward Community Center back up and running with programming that would continue to help out our children. There's a lot of organizations that's helping out today in the city of Saginaw, and we may not see the inner workings right now, but eventually, maybe we will start seeing some positive results for younger adults when it come to the crime and the problems that's going on in the city of Saginaw. You all know we just had a new school that's built, and that's going to help out a lot because now that all the kids are going to one school, so maybe they can cut out this east side, west side, whatever, and start building a positive image here in the city of Saginaw with our students. By us being adults, we can never give too much to help out our children, so I would continue, everybody, to continue to do what you're doing as a city council, to engage our youth whenever possible, and try to bring them up to be positive people in our societies. Thanks for letting me share that.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Ostaas.
Thanks, Mayor. Welcome to everybody who's attending in the chamber today and also watching from home. Just a couple acknowledgements tonight. I just want to acknowledge the fact that we have our county commissioner, Jack Tanny, is here tonight, and also our past council member, John Milne, and the chair of the planning commission, so welcome, and thanks for coming out. Jimmy, thanks for coming out and always sharing your thoughts. It sounds pretty interesting what you're trying to put together, so I hope everything works out for you. And also to the First Ward Community Center, it is a lot of good work that you're doing in the city. I just enjoyed listening to the youth come out and speak. It's good to hear the stories and the success stories that are coming out of such a great organization and nonprofit in our city, so thanks for coming out and sharing your stories. Not too much else, Mayor, just a couple things. I do want to thank our police department. I was able to attend another one of the front porch roll calls, and I want to thank the Northwest Neighborhood Association for hosting this at LeBluff's. And also, thanks to Gabriella Finkbinder, our victim's service division coordinator. She puts on a great program, a lot of good information, and also to Officer Dave Kijerski, who's always there to tell a lot of good stories and just take a lot of questions from our residents, and it's just always good back-and-forth dialogue. Councilman Balls mentioned the high school, and I have been getting a lot of questions, I'm sure everybody has, when are we going to get the chance to see some of these schools? So, they did post this to the Facebook page of the Saginaw Public Schools, but also the Saginaw Arts and Science Academy. They're going to have their open house November 11th at 6:00 p.m. Then Saginaw Middle School is going to be October 21st at 6:00 p.m. And then the brand-new high school is going to be September 30th at 6:00 p.m. Each ceremony is going to have a show program, plaque dedication, and a tour of the facility. Something that's coming up that I'm going to enjoy going to pretty soon, it's the Fourth Annual Showdown. So, this is going to be at the Scheinberg Mural. This is an art event that's being put on by John Vasquez. He heads this up. So, that's going to be Saturday, September 14th, from 12 until 8:00 p.m. Mayor, that's all I have this week.
Is it?
Hi. I'm all done.
Thanks. We have Councilwoman Garcia.
Good evening, concerned citizens of the community. Thanks for all the speakers coming to talk, and I firsthand know First Ward Community Center. I used to go down there, and I would help get some. They would do the field giveaways on Wednesday back in the day. I don't think they have them anymore, but I used to go down there and get boxes of food for my seniors that weren't able to go, to help them out, because transportation has always been a barrier. And so, I was able to go down there and meet a lot of the staff during the time, and I also know the electrician. I can't remember his name, but he's passed away now, but the gym was dedicated in his honor, and he did a lot of great things down there. He worked with us at CEC as well. So, yeah, great things always. First Ward always helped out with a lot of services back then, helping paper consumers and that, so I know it's a great staple in our community that we have, and we're blessed to have as well. So, thanks for coming and bringing light to that, because sometimes I think we forget what resources are available to us out there in the community. Also, just want to say September 15th to October 15th is Hispanic Heritage Month, so we get to celebrate 30 days, and I don't know why the calendar split like that. But anyhow, this weekend, Que Onda starts Friday, Saturday, and Sunday at the Morley Plaza. It's free admission. They're going to have a variety of different bands, food, jalapeno eating contest, piñata for the kids. It's going to be a busy weekend as well, because not only is that going on, they also have the Clean Up the City Saturday. They have the showdown by the silos. So, just a lot of stuff going on in the community, and of course, fall is going to be starting one of my favorite seasons. And we always get these artifacts, and they always have a lot of great information, just things to do. I might see at the Children's Museum Saturday is Dutch a Truck from 10 to 3. That sounds like something fun. I may take my grandson down to that. They're getting ready, the Children's Zoo for the Boo Weekends in October. So, just a lot of good things going on. Of course, the public libraries are always having great events, and I live close to the buttman fish, so it's nice to go, and you see people utilizing all the services that they have in there. Japanese tea ceremony this Saturday as well, or Sunday, the 15th, from 1 to 4, so they're going to do tea ceremonies, children's games, dance, music, and more. So, just make sure that you guys are utilizing all the services and resources and sharing, just because you don't know what else somebody's going through, maybe they need different food pantries, so I'm always sharing that information. The United Way of Saginaw always lists every week now on their Facebook page of all the food pantries that are taking place for that week. So, make sure that you share those with others, because right now, everyone's having a hard time, so just make sure you continue to share the resource and spread the love. Thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Flores.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. It's, uh, split for Hispanic month because there's a number of different, uh, anniversaries that happen between September, uh, October. So go Lions, right, Montgomery? Overtime, that was a big deal, right? And then go Green, cause they won against Maryland. I'm sorry to U of M. Mr. Mitchell, I'm so sorry. We'll get them next time, right? Were you there?
Yes. Don't worry, I've got a photo of the national championship trophy.
Yikes. From last year, right? So, uh, with Queonda, there's also a voter information table that's gonna be happening, um, on Friday, Saturday and Sunday. So if you are not registered, please go and see their table. So, you know, the time to vote is now, right? Uh, it's gonna be a long voting season like we haven't seen from before. So they're putting that on as well. Um, the Dow is putting on a play, The Book of Mormons, uh, which is a Tony award-winning play that is, uh, been put on by Trey Parker, Robert Lopez and Matt Stone from South Park. Big deal, right? Uh, it's only been coming to the Dow and then also to the Eugene O'Neil Theater in Broadway in New York City. So it's gonna be happening on the twenty-fifth of September. If you can, please go get tickets. It's a great event that's gonna be happening in the area. And I'm gonna be taking my son. Also, kinda mask up or be cautious with COVID. I got COVID last week myself, or about ten days ago, quarantined. This was before the meeting, don't worry. I would've called. Real quick. All right, if any, real quick, if anybody has any information on, uh, Keyshawn Banks, Juan Lee, Quay Smithers, Mario Bogler, Mario Bogle, Bulger, Pamela Whitson, Ryan Clemmons, Roy Whitson III, Cortez Hampton, Mezzy Rutherford, Jonathan Lamar Van, Ron Pacico, Delance Stevens, T Z Thomas, Daquan Memes, Janelle Whittington, Darius Horison, Dennis Tris- uh, Christophers, uh, Jason Porterfield, or the shootings at six hundred block South Woodbridge Street. Please call one eight hundred four two two five two four five, uh, for Crime Stoppers. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Beth. Masked up, Mr. Copeland.
I was gonna take it off. But thank you to our public speakers, uh, who were shared this, uh, this evening. I do ask of your forgiveness for my tardiness. Um, and pardon to those public speakers who I was not here for. I will be going back to listen to our recording, um, just to make sure I gather that. Um, I do wanna say what a great events we've been having the past couple of weeks. Uh, we had the prayer on the bridge, um, and Pastor Charlene Washington did a great job. Um, if you didn't know what was going on, you would've, you didn't, you wouldn't know. You just heard people yelling and praying and gospel music. But it was a really good time just to welcome in the new school year. As well as, uh, the C A C put on the Celebration of Fatherhood at World Outreach Campus. And I was a little late, but Mr. Lorenzo, if you're watching, I still will give you those twenty pushups. So, so I got to do twenty pushups, so I'm gonna give him the twenty pushups. Um, but today I do wanna say, um, what I was gonna talk about today is, uh, last week I was eh, at the Capitol. And this was the first time I've actually done a tour of the Capitol. Um, and when we were walking through, starting off the tour, there's a picture of a bunch of boys. And we were walking past and someone yelled out, oh, Saginaw's there. And I looked, the picture's from nineteen sixteen. And the picture, um, had a big sign that says, City of Saginaw, City of Opportunity. And I, I think this a hundred and eight-year-old picture just really did something to me. Uh, and I think even thinking about this. Seeing that and hearing from First Ward this evening, you know, knowing Ms. Trailer, this was my first time actually hearing your story. Uh, and so it really speaks, a lot of times I talk about, you know, um, First Ward and the work they're doing with our young people and with our seniors. But then tonight, I heard that, you know, they're making a difference for everyone. Um, and it was just really great to just hear, even Brianna, seeing you up here tonight and knowing you, that was kudos. I'm gonna tell Pastor to get you up there, but. But I appreciate the work that you all are doing, but it really speaks to who we are in the essence of the city of Saginaw. That we truly are a city of opportunity. We, we go through our ebbs and flows and our transitions. Um, but it's a hundred and eight-year-old picture and the eight is a number of new beginnings. And I, I really believe that we are on the brink of something great. And if we continue to stay in faith, continue to see those things push forward, vote support and be there. As you said, this is a major election. And Saginaw is going to be national news, uh, because of the power that we hold. And that's the opportunity that we provide. So thank you all for being here and as we continue on this week, just look for more opportunities. The opportunities are here, the opportunities are coming. Um, but we just have to continue to stay in that place of faith and knowing that as we work together collectively, we may not agree on everything, but then when we work as a unit, we will continue to bring those opportunities. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilwoman Sylvia.
Thank you so much. First of all, I'd like to say thank you all so much for coming to your city council meeting. Uh, just awesome. This is your council meeting and, uh, I work for you. Um, I'd like to thank all of the, uh, public speakers, uh, and kudos to First Ward. Uh, simply because I'm one of them people, I like to do drive-by's. I like to come by when you don't know I'm coming or pass by when you don't know I was there. So I saw your young people working this summer. I drove by several times, I was like checking them out, looking, et cetera, you know? And it is awesome because, um, when you work with young people hands-on, it's different than looking from the outside in, you know? And I've worked with young people for a very, very long time. And I am just so proud of the young people that got up and, um, the direction that First Ward helped, uh, impacting their, in their lives. And also I wanted to say openly, thank you so much for assisting the, uh, uh, the SEALS Foundation. Because they did let me know that you all collaborated and helped them. And that's what I, that's what I look for and I'm sure a lot of people look for collaborative effort, you know? When I'm missing something, if you can help lend a hand, and that, that's very awesome. And I was just looking and listening at the young people that, um, maybe something can happen with some of the other youth centers that, uh, where are they now? You know, we've got, uh, so many and we won't tell ages, but me and, uh, Councilman, uh, Williams go way back working with youth. And it would be awesome to know where a lot of these young people are right now. You know, we've got a lot of young people that, uh, from Saginaw that are still here, that are doing some awesome, awesome things, you know? And a lot of that came through, uh, uh, grant dollars, et cetera, from the city of Saginaw. I'd like to say, yeah, this, uh, voting, uh, the state of twenty twenty-five. Um, I was, uh, fortunate enough to, uh, go and hear, uh, some of, uh, what's going on with twenty twenty-five. Listen, you all need to get that information. This is so important because they're trying to take us back over a hundred years. You know, it, this is just something we need to look at. We need to pay attention to, you know, different things that are going on, uh, you know, not just locally, but in the state, you know? So, uh, that's it, cause my minutes are running out. Have a plus day.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for coming tonight. Uh, I wanna second everything that's already been said about First Ward, uh, Mr. Brown and friends. Uh, I wanna commend you on a diverse group of expression tonight. Uh, that's beautiful, it's beautiful. Uh, I do want to respond to one of our speakers, um, who spoke about contractual issues and council having the power to intervene or make changes. And city manager and the attorney can also tell me if I'm right or wrong on this. But my understanding is that city council has no place in contractual negotiations, um, things that go on in the day-to-day operations with employees. Uh, so although we have the freedom to come to the mic and speak, which I encourage at all times to do so, it's important to understand and educate yourself on the role of council. That is not us. We have no power nor influence in contractual negotiations, uh, with city employees. We cannot challenge, change, disrupt, inter- interrupt anything. Um, that is not our role. So again, freedom of, of expression is important, you have the right to do so. But if you're looking for changes, this is not the place for it to happen. Thank you, Mayor.
Next, we have Mayor Pro Tim Bitch.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and good evening to everyone here tonight. Um, I don't have much actually this evening, but I do want to, uh, thank all of our public speakers. Um, I would co-sign everything that's been said about First Ward, but specifically from my experience, just thank you all, um, for the collaborative efforts that you have helped me with, with Quater Park. And going forward, and I'm looking forward to working with you all in the future, um, because I think there's plenty of opportunity there. But the one thing that I was struck, um, so much by with, with your, um, presentation tonight was how not only are you helping young people in the community and, and so many different groups of folks, but you attracted back such a talented group of young people. And Saginaw has been and was one of the reasons why I wanted to be on city council. Um, we ha- we have a pipeline out of the city of young, talented people. And they, they take their talents and get their education elsewhere. And if we're lucky, they come back home. And, um, to have something going on at First Ward that has brought such a collection of talented people and kept them there and, and, and allowed them to serve in that capacity is a wonderful thing to see. And it's not something that we see all the time. So thank you so much for being here tonight and for everything that you do. Um, I wanted to also commend our, um, our students and all of our teachers and educators in Saginaw, uh, for getting through their first week of school. I know that, um, my, my youngest started her first year at Saginaw United. So I've seen firsthand with, you know, the challenges of just starting the first week of school, let alone combining two schools and opening in a new building. And I just wanna commend them. The facility is amazing. The, um, the energy amongst the students that I've seen has just been incredible and hopeful. And I think more hopeful than I've seen a lot of these young folks who have never had a facility like, like what they're seeing at Saginaw United. So I just wanna commend everybody in the district for, um, making it through the first week and having a successful time. And I'm looking forward to, um, all the wonderful things that we, all the benefits that we reap from having such a wonderful, um, combination of our high schools here together. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. In three minutes, I'll kill you. Um, what I wanna say is just short, sweet, thank all of the public speakers. First Ward, I was a civetan girl, so, but y'all still all right in my book. You know, First Ward has been around and I, well, you know what? I read was all, all three centers, Neighborhood, First Ward and Civetan. Cause back then, we could go any side of town we wanted to and nobody said or did nothing to us. Um, Saginaw is transforming. I don't know if y'all paying attention, but we're transforming. Right now, you heard Councilman Copeland talk about we in the White House. We've been in the White House. We've been in the White House. This election depends on the city of Saginaw. So we been in the spotlight for a number of years. And the thing that we, the people have to realize is that we gotta do better so people can keep looking at us. No matter where I go, I take Saginaw with me. I wear a ninety-nine shirt, I wear a Saginaw, Saginaw City Council shirt. No matter where I go in my travels, I got a shirt on. When they say Sag nasty, I correct them real quick, you know, we're Saginaw awesome. Ain't nothing nasty about us, we awesome. Because we've come from nothing to become more and better than we were. My council colleagues, I thank you so much for all of the, all of the groups that you attended last week, the last two weeks for me. My hands is at a thousand other things right now. Um, Councilwoman Sylvia, I appreciate you for coming the other night when we had an open forum. That's our job. Our job is to educate you all. That's one of our jobs. It, it like Councilman Williams said, we can't change nothing. Our job is policy and procedures. And I get a chance to go out and dance and cut ribbons, okay? But in terms of what the council can do, that young man over there runs this city. Yes, we are his bosses. But you gotta have a good reason to let him go. So when we begin to move forward, I want everybody to do your share. Saturday is team up to clean up. You ain't gotta come down here with me if you don't want to. Clean your own, clean your own, what does it say, sweep around your own front door. Clean up your yard. With that, I thank you, Madam Clerk.
Mayor, that takes us to reports from the manager.
Mr. Manager, Mr.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, first, I do want to, uh, talk a little bit about our relationship with labor, since that's come up multiple times. The individual who has spoken here several times is, was involved with a lawsuit with the city regarding this benefit.
Thank you.
As you know, we don't comment on going lawsuits. That lawsuit has been dismissed at the federal level and at the state level. The attorneys did not appeal that decision. The time has lapped, so that lawsuit is done. Um, we recently had three twelve arbitration with the C O A M union. That benefit was not included in that union's request. Our last negotiation with the P O A M union, which is where this originated, originated, did not have any request to change that item. We've had multiple negotiations since that one without request to change that item. I think this, that contract item goes back probably ten years or more. So we typically have three-year contracts. We have quarterly meetings with the P O A M president and vice president and sometimes another officer. We, I've had two meetings with the AFME president in the last probably six weeks. We have an open door policy with our labor unions. Um, we have a management labor meeting that the H R department holds regularly. So we have communications constantly with the unions. So I would, that's all I have to say about that item. But, uh, council member Garcia did mention the, um, Japanese, Japan festival. So I know we did have, when we had our, uh, new sister city from Berry, the mayor and Councilwoman Lamar Sylvia attended a, uh, tea ceremony, which is something they do quite frequently. Uh, but we did talk about with Berry, our relationship with Tokushima. The students, uh, from Tokushima High were here, uh, for a visit in July. And the mayor and I did meet with them and talk with them. They're visiting, uh, Saginaw's part of the summer program established between S V S U and Tokushima Municipal High School. We have to thank S V S U, constantly involved with our sister city programs. Uh, the program is immersive cultural educational experience for students and aims to foster international understanding, cultural exchange and universal goodwill between our two communities. So we have this great Japanese cultural city, the center in the city of Saginaw, that's open quite nearly every day. It's open for tour, tours, tea ceremonies. They have a Japan festival, um, supported by the consulate general of Japan from Detroit. This Sunday, September fifteenth, from one to four P M. And they're going to have, uh, stage performances in taiko, which is Japanese drums, koto, which is a string instrument, martial arts demonstrations in banza, ikibana, which is flower arrangement, origami. And they are having a tea ceremony, that's the one thing that, that there's a ticket required for. So if you're interested in that, check out the, uh, Japanese Cultural Center. And a few council members had asked me for some project updates. So we did have a number of, uh, infrastructure projects that were ARPA-funded, um, that we're working on. Um, the Jibway Island shoreline stabilization. I know a couple of you went out and checked out the shore there, that's rapidly deteriorating. Um, we're still working on that. The environment Great Lakes and energy with Eagle Department at the state. Um, they have a lot of requirements when you're working on shoreline and, and with the, and the water's edge. We're not really working too much in the water, of course, it's short stabilization. But, um, for instance, they're working on, uh, a muscle study. So if you find one of these muscles in that area, you have to have a plan for relocation of those. So that's one of the things that they're working on right now before they can, uh, actually start the stabilization. Um, but we anticipate the, to bid the work out soon. But we anticipate to bid the work out soon and have a contract back to council sometime in November with construction starting in the spring. We had three projects in the cemeteries that were ARPA-funded. Drainage project, which you know, we heard about quite frequently. We went in and checked out that system. It was about a $480,000 project. And we spent most of those funds on restoration, cleaning, and repairs. And we'll have a little bit more work to do in the spring, but that project's just about done. The Forest Lawn Chapel was another one. If you recall, the old cemetery office at the front of the cemetery there, that's being converted to a chapel. We've spent most of, most of that, actually it came in under what we anticipated. And that's scheduled to be complete in November. So once that's done, we can have council have a tour of that building. And then the Oakwood Chapel is a much lower allocation because we're going to do a restoration of that built, building that's currently there. It's going to be a little bit more than what we had anticipated, but we'll be able to use some of the savings from the Forest Lawn. And we'll have a contract for that hopefully in November with work beginning in the spring. And then we also allocated funds to the parking ramp CSO basin in Old Town. That's still undergoing engineering work, and that's progressing. But we should have a contract this fall. And then the other project that we get a lot of questions about is not ARPA-funded, but it's the water tower. So the water tower, this is a rough timeline of what, where that project will be going. Its foundation work is finishing in September. The tank is going to sit on 92 60-foot deep concrete pilings on which the foundation is mounted to. Pedestal construction will be October to January. Assembling the steel tank and painting that grade February to June. Raising steel tank and finish top, June to August. All finished work. Interior Electrical Utilities site work, July to December. And then the commission of the tank, December 2025. As long as the weather cooperates, a lot of this, especially the painting. You can see the progress. That's the city's website. We do have a webcam there, take still pictures. If you go into the Water, Waste Water Treatment Services section, the city's website, you can see the photos of the project. We'll start updating those more frequently as the project moves forward. And you can learn more about the project on what's happening on Weber Street. That's something that you can click on there as well. There's also piping projects to connect that to the plant that's being done at the same time. So I think that's progressing well. Those are all the items that I have, Madam Mayor.
Any questions? Yes, Councilman Copeland.
Madam Morales, is it possible to look at, I was thinking about like all the work that we've done on homes, roofs, all those things. But when you drive around the community, you don't, we don't see it. We don't know. Is there a way to possibly to get some placards or yard signs that shows this is the work that has been done through ARPA? Just so, right now, we can mark it on what has been done. You know, we, last meeting, we talked about 600 some houses. And I was thinking, how would that look if we had 600 placards or something scattered in our communities to show this is what we've been able to do with ARPA?
Oh yeah, I like that idea. You know, I don't know if we could, if people would guarantee that they'd put them out. But something that we could reach out to them to see if they'd be willing to do. But another thing that we could probably do is take the addresses where works has been done and use our GIS mapping to show a map on the areas that, where people have received that type of help from the city's ARPA. I think that's a great idea to illustrate that, yeah.
Yes, Councilman Ball.
Mr. City Manager, how was the piping underground? Have they started that yet from the water, from the, no?
Wait a minute, I come up.
No, right now, we're waiting at valves, which wasn't our original plans. We're looking at February till you'll start seeing them digging around the treatment plant.
So they're gonna dig right under the ground, right under Washington Street, all the way to there?
Yes, and what it is, is a lot of different tie-ins. So there is a line that runs right towards the towers. It'll be up Weber to the tower and then the different connections. And then we're replacing some things that need to be replaced. We still have some stainless steel, excuse me, steel pipe in the ground that needs to go. That's something that keeps me up at night. So while we're doing this work, we're making things better as we go. And that's one of the big drivers on getting that. And again, to get options for how we set valves, we have less problems.
I had mentioned a few months ago about federal funds coming into the city of Saginaw. And I know there's a minority content in federal laws. And if we, are we getting any people that live in the city to work on these water lines? Do we know?
And that's something, because I've been paying attention, that I've been looking for something to pitch to the manager. We have programs and we're set up for minority ownership. You know, we have Davis Bacon. We have all those, all those rules from the state. This money comes down through the state. But what I haven't been able to find is something that helps out a pipe fitter. I can help the pipe fitter company, but I can't help the pipe fitter. And again, I'll be going, well, tomorrow, I'm off to the state conference, and I'll be harassing pretty much anybody that'll talk to me for a minute about, does anybody have a program for that? Because that's what I'm looking. I can, I can get that with ownership, and there's rules on that. But what I can't get, and I haven't been able to find a program that I think will work, to be able to say, hey, you're gonna get so many points for so many people being, you know, from the city of Saginaw, you know, as part of your group. And I just haven't been able to find that. Please trust me.
I was just wondering, do we even act? You know what I'm saying? Like, is there anybody that's working on here from the city?
We do not, no, we do not survey that.
Well, I wish in some way we can. I don't know, do I need to make a motion? And the city council gotta, gotta support me on this? Or can I get from the management to say, hey, what's going on? I mean, are we hiring people in this city? I mean, I would love to see some people that look like me, intentionally look like me, working on some of these pipe jobs. I mean, when I see, and it's not, I'm not beating up on you.
Oh, you're good.
I'm beating up on the whole damn city because it is sickening to see that people drive in, come in and work, don't look like the people that work in this city, and they drive way back out, don't buy no gas, not a pop cigarette, nothing. And we got young people that need to be employed in the city of Saginaw so they can make the whole families look good. I mean, we want Saginaw to look good. How can we not make the city look good by not hiring people that live in the city? And I think it's an issue. I mean, we got, Mr. Davis is working with kids and teaching them STEM stuff about piping, electricity, and all that kind of stuff. And then like someone had mentioned earlier, and then as soon as our kids get old enough, the ones that do get the training, they can't get the jobs. So what they do is they move out of state, out of the city. Last week, last city council meeting, I beat up my grandson. I said something about him because he was teasing me because I didn't have a master plumbing license. And his dad has a master plumbing license. And he said, Papa, you don't have one of these. So I said, now he's working for his father, and he don't have a license either. But guess what he told me last week when I told him what I said about city council? He said, well, my dad is a master plumber, and all the work that I do for him, he can put that on my hours so I can be an apprentice pipe fitter. Now, I would love to have had my son stay here in the city, but he couldn't find a job like that. So now he's in Belleville doing the same thing that I wish my son could be doing here in the city of Saginaw. And if we don't be intentional about this or try to find some ways to help our people here in the city, it's gonna be all our fault when we close the doors because we don't have nobody else want to work in the city. So I appreciate you going out looking, and I hope that you come back and give us your report on what you find out.
You will know as soon as I find something.
Thank you, sir. I really appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Councilwoman Sylvia.
Thank you so much. What I wanted to know, you spoke about the stabilization at Jibway. Do you have like kind of a breadth? Is it this year that maybe possibly, or are we looking at next year?
I think the work would be in the spring. And they're, you know, actually, with the amount of work that needs to be done, we're gonna do as much as we can with the ARPA money that was allocated, but it's not going to cover everything over there. Phil, do you want to add to that?
Yeah, no, Tim's right. We would probably already have a bid and be started, and have been starting on it. But the requirements at Eagle, I mean, first of all, we had to do a mussel survey, which means there's mussels that could be extinct or endangered that are within the river area. So we had to do this study that took time. And then we had to do a mussel relocation plan. I mean, even though we're going into the water edge only a couple feet, we're not going out 50 or 100. We still had to study 50 feet off the river edge, the whole length of the bank, which is like 3,800 feet. Now they're requiring, because we turned in an Eagle permit, a joint permit to, because we're working along the water edge. Now they want a hydrological study done to ensure that the excavation work we do won't change the flow or velocity of the river. And then we also have to do a soil analysis that, turn that in because they want to make sure there aren't any hazardous chemicals that we now have to. Our original plan is to keep the soils that we excavate on the island to save costs. But if there's contamination within them soils, we might have to haul it away. So we're still, we're still waiting on that permit from Eagle. We should have it within the next couple of weeks. I, we could, the job's already ready to be bid. But I don't want to bid it without the permit. And then we have to change some of the requirements within the bid docs because the permit changed. So we're ready to bid here in the next couple, four weeks. Then we have to do, get done with the mussel survey. But we're looking at, once we get that, get it to council in November, December, that river's gonna freeze up pretty soon. So will the soils along the bank. So it's gonna be best to start it, you know, probably next spring. And you're probably looking at a, you know, a four to five-month construction schedule.
So thank you. So my, my other comments in regards to Jibway, I'll save for later. But what I wanted to know also in regards to home repairs as it relates to ARPA dollars, what I wanted to know was where were those dollars? Where were you thinking that those dollars would come from? To open that back up and to continue working on some of the homes of our citizens?
Well, that would be up to council, you know.
Now, so where were you thinking?
Where, where would I pull them from?
Yes.
I would pull them from the money you have left to allocate, roughly with what's been clawed back, the 3 million, because the home program does impact youth.
And so do you have any plans in regards to the remaining interest dollars? Those X amount of dollars that are left in regards to the interest of ARPA dollars?
Well, right now, the only plans we have are with, with Guide House paying that out of there. There aren't any additional expenditure plans. I think we do need to do some research with that. And I'll probably talk to the finance director and our auditors just to see if, because that, that money then becomes subject to our regular spending rules. So we'll have to look at, do we follow, have to follow the state guidelines? There are rules of spending city dollars on private property and stuff like that. So I want to make sure that there aren't any issues with potential expenditures of that funding on that type of project.
One last question in regards to.
Hold on one minute.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Go ahead, she can go first.
No, did you have a question?
I had two questions.
There was two questions.
Yep, I had two.
Okay, I'll be back.
Did you have? Okay.
Councilman Flores.
Just real quick, we had talked before about the interest amount from the ARPA dollars. And you had said that you're gonna be spending those on ARPA projects. So I'll bring up when we talked about that last and when you had stated to the public that you're gonna be doing that. And then second, with this union issue, is that POAM?
Well, the original benefit was in the POAM contract, I believe. And, but he is the president of COAM.
So the last time I asked about these contracts was in 2021. The expiration date for that contract was 22. Are they in a new contract now?
Yeah.
So this is something, when's the expiration date on that contract?
26.
26?
26, yeah.
And then just two real quick things. How many folks are in the unit?
In the which unit? POAM or COAM?
POAM.
POAM, I mean, I don't know off the top of my head. All of the police officers are in the POAM. All of the sergeants and lieutenants are in the COAM. So I think COAM has about 14, 12 members. POAM has 48.
Okay. And are they, is it closed shop? Closed shop, open agency?
You can't, it's, it's closed because I think even when you can opt out of a union, I think they excluded public safety.
Okay. Okay, all right, thank you.
Councilwoman Sylvia, you done?
Thank you. I just have a quick question. You were talking about Forest Lawn and changing. So what will happen with the existing chapel?
So the existing chapel, you mean the old, the tall structure?
Yeah, the back.
So that one isn't usable right now?
It's gonna tear down?
Well, I mean, eventually it'd be great to restore that. I think the last time we looked at restoring that, it was over a million dollars. That has, I think, some historical significance, as does the building that we're transforming into a chapel. But at some point, we did have kind of a private group that was interested in raising money. That's probably eventually what, what would have to happen to restore that. It is, I think our engineer was the last one in there sometime. You don't have to come up.
That's a bad shape, Tim. That's like almost two murders.
It is.
Off by a million. But it's, it does have a lot of issues inside.
A lot of issues.
All right, thank you very much.
Any other questions? Hearing none, thank you, Mr. Manager, Madam Clerk.
That takes us to the consent agenda.
The agenda has been available at City Hall and on the web, and on the city webpage and on SGTV Channel 191. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda, leaving room for exceptions.
So moved.
Do I have any exceptions? Yes.
This one, number four.
Any others? Hearing no others. All those in favor sitting in front by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
Item number four is to approve the memorandum of agreement for $910,000 with Victorious Community Development for the Police Department. That was Councilman Copeland.
Councilman Copeland.
Thank you, Mayor Morales. The only question I have is, is there a way just to see, in what we were provided, it was a brief description. Is it in our role and our attorney may answer this as well, to see if the, what the actual plan is, just to give us an idea? Is that out of our purview? Or are we able to see that? Because it would go for the help in this one.
Yes, actually, it's split in two. Help gets a portion, they get a portion. Help has a plan. VCD has a plan in place. And those, some of those plans are still being put together as to what they're gonna do.
Gotcha.
Okay, it is a reimbursement grant.
Gotcha.
So the work has to be done. And we have to have proof before we can reimburse that the work was done. We're not handing out money.
Awesome, thank you so much. I move to approve Consent Agenda number four.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor sitting in front by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
Takes us to board commission and committee reports.
Do we have any reports from any boards or commissions? Madam Clerk.
Onto appointment of board commission and committee members. We have one, it's to acknowledge the mayoral reappointment of Cecilia Olvera to the Saginaw Housing Commission with a term to expire September 30th, 2029.
I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor sitting in front by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
Onto ordinance introduction, we have one. It's to create the Repke Homes Historic District in the city of Saginaw to be added to the table of special ordinances of the city of Saginaw Code of Ordinances O-204.
I need a motion to introduce.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Any questions? All those in favor sitting in front by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. These orders will be laid over under our charter provision as well.
Onto resolutions, we have one there. It's authorizing the sale and consumption of alcoholic beverages during the Fourth Annual Fiesta Cañon da event.
I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor sitting in front by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
Takes you to miscellaneous business.
I'd like to make a motion that all subcommittees, based on all allocations, be made by the next council meeting and with, with the remaining portion being allocated on the 23rd and all that's not be split between the city infrastructure and the home improvement.
Support.
Now it's up for discussion. Yes.
Just clarification. This is just saying the remaining two committees just need to allocate. allocate their money by the next meeting.
That's, that's what, exactly what it's saying.
And if we, if that doesn't happen, is where this split between-
Then I'm coming back with a motion.
All right.
It's, it's in the motion, you don't have to come back.
Okay, well, since it's in motion, tonight, everybody, everybody's had ample time. You've had lists, you've had people come to us, we still haven't done anything. So, you got what, two weeks, three weeks?
Two.
Two weeks. And please, use it wisely. That's all I'm saying, because we only have, I see your hand, we only have four months before we've gotta have this money allocated. Yes, ma'am?
Yeah, we're, um, I could almost go along with that except for the fact that, um, I don't think it, well, as far as I know, the subcommittee that I'm in, it's not due to us not meeting and making recommendations, it's due to some things that we need extra information, et cetera. So, uh, I'm, I'm gonna, uh, say that I, I don't know why we can't wait to the deadline, near the, nearer the deadline, and, uh, then, uh, those dollars would go, uh, you know, to the home repairs or whatever, because we're yet waiting. Some things work out, then there's something else going on. We're just trying to get that information.
Let me, let me answer that question. The issue I have is this, is that we'll be right at the witching hour. If we wait to the last minute, then we're scrambling. The home program, you can allocate the money, but they won't be able to do anything 'cause of the weather. And so, I'm saying, you guys got two weeks and, and, and hopefully in two weeks, you're looking at agencies now. And so, you need to bring them forward so that everybody can know what's going on. It's been over a year. It's time to move.
But see, it's not that easy, simply because, like I said-
It, it may not be that easy, however.
You're gonna let me finish?
Yeah, come on.
It's not that easy simply because, like I said, it's not the subcommittee. We're waiting on information, maybe from, uh, uh, Guide House and/or the city to get information in regards to those particular entities.
Okay.
So, you know.
Okay, well, the people on the committee, on your committee, I've got sheets of recommendations that was recommended. You guys can start looking at some of those, um, um, the workforce development. I guess I should've did it for y'all too, 'cause it was some on there that you might've been able to use. But I'm just saying, I understand people are waiting for information. I do understand all of that. However, we can't wait till the, we can't wait till the witching hour and then try to hustle. 'Cause otherwise, we're gonna end up giving money back and the people who control the money, they've already said, what are you guys doing? Come on. And so, yes, but you, you've had, you've had some agencies, I know, that they're waiting for this and they're waiting for that, and I understand. However, when I want some money, I get what I gotta get done and I make sure I get in. And if that means I gotta call and worry you every day, I'm gonna call and worry you every day, 'cause I want the money. And if it's not that easy, then come back and say something. Okay? Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, one to the Mayor Pro Tem, please send me the thirteen or twelve folks that you have. And an email. Okay.
You got it.
That's fine. No, no, an email, please, thank you, that, uh, have been talked about before at the table here. And then, second, what conversations have you had with folks on council that made you have this motion?
You know what? I haven't had any conversation with people on council. I've had pe- conversations with community, other communities. And so, when you say, "What conversation?", let, let me clear the record. When I call one of you nine, of you other eight, I call all eight. I don't call one and ask what you think, I call everybody. So, I haven't talked to any council member about anything. This was a motion I'm putting on the floor. And you know what? Motions can be changed, okay? They can be changed. They can go up or down. But at this point, I'm not the only one that feel that way, I'm sure. Committee members, I'm not saying that you're doing anything wrong. I'm not saying that. I'm saying we need to move forward. So, for you to ask me, "Well, council members?", none. None. I think real good, I can walk and shoot bubble gum at the same time, okay? And so, when I begin to sit back and just watch, you asked about a list. This list has been out how long? It's, uh, the city manager sent us a list.
Point of information, how long's the list of thirteen people, thirteen entities been out? Point of information, how long's that list of thirteen individuals been out?
I don't know what the, the thirteen is.
I don't know thirteen, all I know is was on this list.
It's been constantly referenced, point of information, it's been constantly referenced over here at the table, so I'd like to see it, one.
Okay, well, you know what? I'll make, I'll make sure that they get you that email-
Please do.
-that was sent out. And I also, if you don't mind, City Manager, I'm gonna direct you to get that out, as well as the list of the eligible ones that you guys went through as well. 'Cause I know the thing about, it's a, it's a list of them.
What we sent out was, here's some potential projects that would be easy to fund. It's not necessarily just workforce development or just-
No. That's why I say some of those might be in this one, that they had, that are potential. The Guide House is almost cleared. Yes.
Thank you. I sent the city a list of individuals that I was looking at about five weeks ago, and then haven't heard back from the city yet about if there was a difference between youth and development or workforce. So, I would like that response at some point in time. Uh, I, where am I right now?
So, Mr. Manager, can you please get that? That noticed to Councilman Flores? Yes, sir.
I'd like to know if, um, Guided Grace been, um, been approved by the city and Guide House.
It on the list.
Okay, so it's all good?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I'm, you know what? I'm gonna make sure, 'cause I just did this after I sat back and looked, and I said that these were some groups, yes, Councilwoman Sylvia, I apologize. I know that you always tell me to send you, but you always tell me to, to print it out. And so, I just had time. So, I'm gonna give you guys this whole list.
Okay.
Okay? And then you can go through it. I'm not saying that not all of these will work.
Right.
I just wanted to get you in a direction so that we can move forward. Yes, sir.
I would motion to amend the mayor's motion to go to the meeting on October seventh, which would be the meeting after what she's motioning.
There's a new motion on the floor, meaning my motion asking to go, not the next meeting, but the following meeting.
Oh.
I need a second.
Second.
Discussion.
This is just to give more time?
Yeah.
To give more time. Yes.
Correct. I think it, it would be give us ample time to get all the information.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought that's what you meant when you extended it. I'm sorry. I spoke out of time.
I'm just commenting on it. Yep. Just give us ample time. I think it's important for us to be able to spend this money, uh, the, the deadline to be extended to the seventh, or the meeting after the next meeting would be important for us to be able to have.
Okay, so are you talking the seventh or are you going to the end of the month?
Seven.
Keep it seven.
You just did, you just did a double dial on me.
No, he said seven.
Okay, the seventh is your date?
October seventh.
October the seventh. If that's when the next meeting is?
October the s- yeah. Yeah, it is, yes, it is, yes, it is. That's right.
It's the first meeting of October.
October fourteenth, this meeting.
It's the, the next meeting is not to the four- I knew it was some time in it, that's why I asked Councilman Flores. So, the next meeting is not until the fourteenth.
Could that, the fourteenth is Columbus Day, so we have a meeting on, on December day?
According to the council meetings.
Oh, we don't close for that?
Okay. So, I apologize. I would motion for it to be on the fourteenth of October.
Second.
Any discussion? Yes.
I will vote no on this because I will be out of town, so, and I believe my, I wanna make sure my voice is here for that, so that is the reason why I will be voting no.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All those in favor sitting in front by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
I didn't hear that. Tell me, out those opposed?
Nay.
Can you read the motion again, sir?
So, this is just on the amendment to the mayor's motion that was for all subcommittee-based allocations be made by October fourteenth with all remaining unallocated funds, but this